Middle County Board Meeting to order. If we will, we'll open with a prayer. You wanna do it?
I will. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord Jesus, to ask you to guide us, Lord, and protect us. Lord, we appreciate everything you do for us, Lord. We just pray that you'll be with us throughout the rest of this meeting, let us make the right decisions, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Now we stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the land of the United States of America. To a world which stands one nation under God, indivisible, et in verity just as one.
Don't have nobody here loud. All right, let's see here. Need to add anything to the agenda?
Uh, nothing.
All right. Did you approve the agenda? Everybody have a make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes, has everybody looked at the minutes? Everybody thinks that the minutes are in order? I need a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second? Second. All in favor?
I'm gonna have a vote if I want to hear.
Second?
I'll second it.
Oh, you, oh, well, okay. All in favor? Aye. That passes then, right?
Yep.
All right, financial reports? Take long. Look down. All is in order. Need a motion to approve the financial reports?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in a favor?
Aye.
Let's see. No appearances? No appearances?
If you, if you want, you may move Mr. Claude up to the appearances, or you can just leave him down until the new business.
You wanna go ahead and do it?
If you wanna go ahead.
That's fine, that's fine with us, I mean. You wanna go ahead and get it over with. That's fine, yeah, go ahead.
I, I gave them their copies, so they'll go.
Y'all have a copy of what I've come up with. Took me a long time to figure out just exactly. But what we trying to do, you know, and I appreciate the county commissions helping us. Get us a building to meet it. I appreciate that, and I thank y'all for that. But we haven't been able to generate any money. Folks are tied on the money, they won't donate to us. So what we would want, or wanting to try to get, are asking y'all if we can be put on a line item like the golf courses and the library and the park and all that kind of stuff. Where we could receive money each month on the, from their tax digest, we can put on the tax digest. And this is what I've come up with, each of you got a copy of it. And like I say, these figures may not be exact. But just off the top of my head, this is the best I can come up with. We need a director to direct the thing down there. I've been working on this thing, what, three years? Maybe four, close to four years now, trying to get it going. But we don't have the money to pay anyone to do anything, so it's, I mean, it's just, you know, it's just, you and y'all to them. Suzie does a good bit, and I do a good bit, and anybody else can do anything. But it's just sort of been hanging in the, hanging in the air. And we come up with this, and I didn't know where this would work a lot. Y'all, if we're doing the tax digest to work, we could receive some money. I tried to ask for grants, and they say they grant out there for equipment. You get grants for anything, but pay somebody. And I mean, I haven't ever found any grants, anything that would pay anybody to. But if I wanted, if all of our computers, I could get a grant for a computer, you know. I could get a grant for anything else, but to pay someone wages, I, I can't find, you know. And I can't find anybody that can tell me what to do. And I'm not too good on the computer, no way, I just sort of hunk around on one little bit.
Well, maybe you need to buy some computers and have a computer course or something.
That's a good idea, but we gotta have the money first, ain't it?
Still gotta ask somebody to direct it, don't you?
You have to have a director.
Got it. See, we need a director, somebody that can carry on programs, you know, to what the people at the center can expect to take place each day.
Doug, is all that legal to do this?
You, you can put it on the line item, I was telling, me and Mr. Claude was talking about this, we, the county's already paying for.
About half of that already, isn't it?
We're already paying for about half of that already by ACCG Insurance providing for the building. And we pay for the internet, the sewage and the water. So they would basically need the director's salary, the supplies, and the miscellaneous. But you, you can do that, what you'd have to do is you'd have to hold public hearings, you'd have to have at least two public hearings to, for the public to come, and then you would vote on it.
Well, I wouldn't have no problem with that one, sort of.
So that's something we need to do at budget time, kinda? I mean, if it didn't?
Yeah, I mean, we need to go ahead, if y'all wanna proceed, you know, at least have to start holding the public hearings, and then we can go ahead.
One other thing, Dave. Oh, I put on, I didn't know exactly what social security is. I put that same point eight percent. But after I thought about it, if you issue about ten ninety-nine, you don't have to worry about that, right?
That's right.
I know I done do some work, I thought, I got a ten ninety-nine, that difference between me and internal revenue when I paid the taxes and social security stuff like that.
Do y'all have somebody in mind if this was to?
No, we had, don't have anybody in mind until we get sure that we gonna be able to pay those things. I mean, that's the thing.
Right.
And we're sure we gonna pay it, then we could advertise or start questioning people about, would you like to take this job on?
Right. I mean, if y'all wanna start, we can start getting, Mr. Claude, we can actually really come down with the right numbers. And then he can either present it, 'cause like the face said, we're not, we still got some to do, public hearings, we're nowhere near that.
We're gonna have revenue, we're not gonna have revenue numbers for at least twenty, forty-five days.
Forty-five?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead and proceed, to go ahead and get this thing started.
Yeah, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I mean, one other thing, I didn't figure, of course. Like, I don't know all that much about it, but I didn't figure that anything could be done probably till if you tax it.
Right.
I didn't figure that anything could be done before.
So this, so even if this all passed, it would not take a place until?
It won't take it this year.
January first?
They, or do you buy December?
Yeah, but so it would, they would start getting money in January.
Yeah, December.
December. See, that would be nice. Then we can start searching, we can start a search process to search for something.
Well, that's what we're gonna have to find out, with Faye, like, like, cause usually with everything's gotta, where it go, what account it goes in, so we just have to do something.
We gotta figure out, if it goes directly to the seniors that come here, and then we cut you a check, we just gotta make sure.
Do y'all have a checking account, or do y'all have an account?
Yeah, checking account set up.
Okay.
And I've had a few people, a few people donate it to the checking account.
We probably just have to talk to ACCG.
Churches, yeah. And you may have to keep it separate, you may have to keep the tax money separate.
Appliances and stuff.
I don't know, it's appliances.
Yeah.
I know here we have to keep everything separate.
So like, if y'all got some donation money, y'all might have to have two accounts, like, some might have to go in that, that, and, and keep it separate than the tax money. Yeah. So we just, that, we just got to find out the logistics of what all got to go.
That could be done.
But, but you saying that we could probably take off that Georgia power line?
Well, I, I wouldn't even do that, 'cause I mean, we're already doing it. I would just, whatever y'all need, you tell me into your budget.
Yeah.
I would just figure out the director's salary, the supplies, I, you know, the cleaning, I can provide the cleaning. I mean, we, we've got a building person that can clean. Right, that's what we need to figure out.
Everything needs to go into that line.
Cause your total.
You just work the magic and see what, and we, we'll, we'll discuss this again, I'm assuming.
Yeah, this is, this is the part just to see.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Well, the power bill.
Yeah. So we need to have another meeting when to tie some of this, at one of our budget workshops?
Sure.
It's not about this one.
Right, right.
Some of these in the mall building?
Yeah.
And I, and I assume that, that y'all will still maintain the building and the equipment within the building, like refrigeration stuff, that you always doing that?
Which is for a fee?
He wanted the charge when we came in the door.
He gotta make money.
We told him to make money, and we told him to take some money, and so.
It's like we normally do.
Well, y'all figured out, if y'all, if I need to meet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With y'all.
Yes, sir.
If we need to meet, I didn't mean, but, you know.
Right.
But.
So I guess we're staying, don't get, reach out, find out.
We'll, we'll, we'll get with ACCG and find out about the, like, like, if we can do the building insurance, 'cause it, it, like I told you before, it's all up under a blanket cover. So not one building has a specific amount. Um, and we pay two hundred nineteen thousand dollars a year for buildings, so it, you see how much that can be.
Yeah.
So it's probably best if that's left under the county and stuff, that would, that would eat up your.
Yeah, y'all might go up, if, if y'all broke it out, it might be more, you know.
So we'll, we'll get with them and just figure out what can and can't, and then I'll get with you on that.
Well, but like I said, the main thing that we are interested in is a director to carry on the digging activities down there.
My rec faced everything out of the way.
Yeah, I know what she's, I know what you're talking about, we just gotta see, we gotta just see if we can do that.
Maybe everything but the building insurance, but everything else we.
Everything else can do that, yeah.
Yeah, they better tell us, we just need to.
So like the library.
Yeah, the library gets their own, and we don't.
But we don't own that building, no, do we?
No, we don't. No, I'm not, I'm just talking about they, we don't see that money.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It don't come through.
It goes to them, right.
Rec comes to here.
You just go to them every month.
So what you saying, if y'all approve it, and if passes, the money would come through y'all, and then y'all.
Well, not necessarily.
We don't know, we don't know, we don't know, that's what we. Yeah, yeah, we gotta find out, we don't know exactly. We, we, we suspect it might be like the library, where the, it just goes every month, and it just goes to the library, what's collected.
Well, we already have a bank account, and we can set up another, and we have to.
Right, yeah.
So you say, what you saying then? That the money y'all get, had to be in one account, and anybody donating had to be in another account.
Probably so, cause, cause I mean, I saw you had CPA, and you're, you're probably gonna need to get CPA to do the audits and stuff like that.
Or if we don't, if it was to have to not donate money, and maybe.
No, 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 no.
Other things.
I wouldn't stop it, don't.
Yeah, I wouldn't stop it, don't, no, 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 I, we just, we don't know about co-mingling money, that's what we just.
Just one of the accounts to put where.
Right, right, right.
Can you get that cleaned up pretty soon?
Yeah. I'd have to find one, figure out what the schedule is, and see what, what day we.
I would appreciate.
I need to know what days y'all are open mainly.
Right now, we open five days a week.
And I'm there by ten, if not earlier.
Okay.
Every day.
I'll start working on that.
Five days a week.
To get a schedule.
We know we'll be open in July, five days a week now.
What time do y'all leave up there generally?
Well, it depends, and I'm, I'm the last one out the door, so it depends on.
Two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock?
Yeah, it varies, actually.
No later than five, though.
We're having, we're having activities now, thanks to Sheila and, and Lee.
Mm-hmm.
So we're having activities, so there's, you know, and they're standing for that.
So y'all up there from ten to four?
You know, two, three o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
A ballpark.
Y'all locking around there?
Yes, I'm getting used to it.
Yeah, let them, let them do their research, and then we'll reach out to you and.
We really appreciate it, we really do.
That'll be all right.
So does that mean that y'all have, aren't saying, yes, we will do this?
So, so we got to have hearing, we'll have to have hearings before we can do this.
They voted to proceed with it, but.
We voted to proceed, but we have to have hearings to add something.
That's right.
That's right.
And at the end of it, then they'll vote.
Unless we get, unless we get, get a lot of folks.
You, you got your, uh. It's, it's, I think, uh, one every two weeks.
Has to be seven days.
Within two weeks, you gotta have two.
Yeah.
We gotta advertise it in two weeks.
There must, yep.
That's about all I got, now the rest they'll say, I have something they wanna say, or want to add some, you know.
Really do appreciate what y'all done. The building is, is smaller, but it's all right, that's all right, at least we have a place to go.
Right.
And we really appreciate it.
We appreciate y'all.
Yes, absolutely. You know, what people need to remember is that everybody, if they have a chance to get old, gets older, and you may be there one day.
I sure hope so.
What y'all do to keep living?
Thank you, would like to be with you, there are people in this community that have nobody, so this is an outlet for them.
Right.
And so that's one of the reasons that we want to work at so hard, is to give it, give it open.
That's right.
And yes, on my personal side, I'm gonna have to sort of back out every little bit, because my wife get bored just able every day. And I may wind up dead at home, so I'm gonna sort of have to back out every little bit. What I've been doing is.
You got a bunch of good folks right there that can help you.
When we get a director.
Well, they, they, they helped a lot. And willing, and willing to do what they can do, I mean, I would like that.
Yep. All right. Well, we'll look into all that, and we'll get back with you in a week or two, Faye?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can get back as far as, but we won't have the revenue numbers for a while to be able to figure out.
Forty-five days?
The public hearings are gonna be in September.
So, y'all hear that?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Doug, he's got my number, so if he need, me to come over here, or anything I can, he can just take me or call me or something else.
All right.
I'll come, anybody. Y'all need to come.
Is there anything we can do to help promote it?
Get out and tell people about it, I would imagine.
Especially like for the public hearing.
Yeah, for the public hearing, I mean, you want some positive, we need positive, yeah.
I don't sound all completely.
All right, well, all right.
Y'all wanna comment?
All right, we good if y'all are good.
We're good.
All right, we appreciate y'all.
Well, thank y'all very much.
All right. You wanna go to the old business now? Fueling Center report?
Well, if you look at it, we were down a little bit because of the school being closed, but we still are above average, did have a few.
Could we all be just.
Yeah, y'all go ahead, that's all we got, yeah, yeah, we, yeah.
A few hiccups as far as the tank monitoring system, the battery guy, so we had to get a replacement, but that worked, we need to.
Thank y'all so very much, thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all for what you do, and thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I know, I know it's been a lot on you.
Well, thank y'all for coming, do the best I can do.
That's all you can do, that's all you can do.
Well, we, we appreciate what y'all done for us.
Yeah.
And we appreciate anything that you do.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
I forget what it is.
That's right.
Thanks, they had a cell phone, thank the other day, teach you how to run a cell phone.
I might need to gun it there.
Times they hit two glasses like that.
We, uh, that'll work.
We trying to get something going.
Yes.
You doing all right?
Yes, sir. You tell your wife, I said hello?
I'll tell her, today's her birthday.
She'll have her birthday.
She said, you ain't been with me a little bit, remember my birthday?
I ain't where I'm at, I owe she a.
You ready to continue?
Yeah.
Fueling tanks, nothing? He threw that.
Yes, sir.
He said it was that down, 'cause schools out there ain't buying as much stuff. All right. WMA shooting range?
So the ball's back in their court, um, if you look at the, uh, the initial drawing, uh, with the side by side on it, that, that's what they came up with, and they were like, you know, we can't really find the nine hundred square, the nine hundred foot radius that we've gotta have. But then I kinda threw out there, well, what if we just moved the road a little bit? And that'll give us the nine hundred, and they were, said, well, we were gonna ask you that anyway, so, um, they're looking over that, the last drawing, it's kinda got the shooting range superimposed on it, so that's what it could look like.
So that, what they gonna do is they gonna move this, so this road goes like right by there? We gonna bend the road.
You had to pull it back where, where the A in the highway is, you backing down, I don't know how far that is, but you just backing down the road a little bit.
That'll work.
That's what they're, that's what they're shooting at, but like I said, they're looking, they, they've got several thousand acres that they're looking at on, on ninety-one, and, but these are the two main ones they sent over to me.
So how lo, how long, how long before they'll come back with this, you think, a month or so?
Uh, I, yeah, probably. Um, I don't know if y'all know Brian Vickers? He's the local supervisor, he's now handling it.
All right. Any questions on that? All right, moving on to new business, we did the senior center deal, let's move on to the EMA vehicle financing. We just need approval.
So, you know, I sent out that text message, and, um, I responded back to go with the lowest, which was Peoples', um, we just need a formal vote on it.
So we just need a motion to go with Peoples' Bank for the financing of the EMA vehicle?
And then y'all just still need to decide on what you gonna do with, uh, that truck.
Make a motion together, first, uh, Peoples' Bank.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
An old truck, I pulled it in this morning, he got one that's going down, the black truck, and he could use that truck.
We just need to pay the. She, Debbie's got to have the money for it to be able to afford the payments, 'cause she doesn't get very much splosh. So her getting the truck was all dependent on her being able to.
And how much did she want for it, didn't?
Twenty.
So he would have to pay twenty thousand, not his splosh or somewhere.
Key splosh, something like that. It cost you a whole lot more to get him another one.
We need to work on that, we need to make a motion to do.
Work on that, 'cause I'd have to get, with Terry and see, you know how exactly.
I need a motion for Faye to.
For one, two splosh, two splosh.
Do whatever she's got to do to transfer.
Yeah, I can't put one in splosh.
You know, this.
You can't put anything but the.
You want, do you need, do you need a motion to do something, or?
I can just call Terry and, and find out.
All right, so you don't need a motion?
I do know she's, I have to have the money, though, if she can't.
Yeah, well, I knew that, I knew she told me that, so, she told me about what she wanted for it, so.
Yeah, while we on Andy, Andy is sick of the dog, so he not gonna be.
He's driving, he's driving. He gonna come in?
You don't look that sick to me?
Ain't much of it, I got a bad cold, and I was trying to stay away from everybody.
All right. Now we gonna move to the splosh percentages?
At that budget workshop, this is what y'all talked about with the sheriff. Y'all agreed at the workshop, but you can't, you can't vote in workshops, and you'd have to need a vote to proceed.
So we need a motion to adopt all of this?
That's right.
I need a motion to adopt the splosh percentages.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The semi and trailer, we need a formal vote?
That's correct.
So we just need a motion?
Motion and vote.
I need a motion for the semi and the trailer for the road department?
To come out of T-Spot.
To come out of T-Spot.
That's correct.
Somebody's moved, so moved?
I'm ready.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it has been delivered, we have the truck.
It's in possession.
Run good, Andy?
Run good, drove good.
You got insurance on him?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's got insurance.
We got a beer and wine license renewal? For Quicks Place, I need a motion to renew it?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Library Board appoint. So we need a motion to appoint Deborah Jones?
Now, she just wants to be reappointed. Now, she just wants to be reappointed.
Reappointed? So we just need a motion to reappoint Dr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
To the library board? Is that what it is?
That's right, yes.
All right. I need a motion to reappoint Dr. Jones to a three-year term?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then there's your normal department reports. Um, sheriff's attorney's in, so y'all have his as well. Look like you added one to the two.
We doing so much.
I see that. So y'all have those reports, um. That's about it, I don't think we got. We, we did, um, we did submit two RFPs today for debris cleanup. You remember Debbie was talking about that?
Mm-hmm.
So we did submit that to the Georgia Preparations Sites. We, we're gonna have a, uh, a pre-bidding meeting on July the eighteenth, see who all's gonna be interested in it, so that's been done. We passed our GBI audit. We did good on that.
That's good. They do that every year, right?
Uh, every two years.
Every two years?
Anything for Andy.
Sheriff, anybody, nobody?
Sheriff, he's been, I, I had, I left him in. He's gonna tell you some numbers.
On what?
On the numbers, on your revenue, what you bringing in? Oh, oh.
I already know.
Oh, he bringing in time.
He don't want to talk about that. All right. Anything else, anybody?
No other than, um, the, the other line, so there's something they were talking about. That's, that's on Corey. I'm gonna let Corey come up with that city county meeting again, and then we'll go from there.
When we gonna do that?
Whenever he comes up with it, I think.
This month? This month?
It's gonna have to be.
It needs to be the end, about end of the month, don't it?
Yeah, so he, he'll come up with that, um. I did want to say, Landon, thanks for getting those fireworks, because I, all I heard was that was the best that this been in years.
That, that is a good crowd, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, it was a lot more than we thought it would be.
Yeah.
So that, that turned out to do good.
It did, it was nice, yeah.
Heard a lot of good po, I, I've heard only positive. I hadn't heard any negative.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was positive. Even the sheriff down there.
You shoot, did you shoot the fireworks?
I did. Now, all you gotta do is replace money.
I just need invoices, all I need. All right, fair, nothing else? We need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we go adjourn.